For all of you in the audience, if you could please mute or silence your phones, that would be fantastic. And what we're going to do is start off with a pledge of allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Clerk, can you please call the board to make sure that we've got quorum tonight? Pardon, we can't hear you.
Shirley, okay, there we go. Mayor Orr?
Here.
Dr. Rennie? Mr. Roybal? Mr. Shaner?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. Case? Mr. Cook? Mr. Escobal? Mr. Leyburn?
Here.
Mr. Luna?
Here.
Four members are absent, we do have a quorum.
Fantastic. Just a point of housekeeping, what we learned from our conversations with last night is we've not done a good job as far as passing the microphone along. So if you want to speak, grab the mic, if I don't hand it to you, so just take charge and make sure that we're on the microphone. And I believe we are live streaming Facebook, so to everyone watching, welcome. And some, just to kind of set the stage for where we were at. So the city presented its proposal, and what we found were there's, you all had a proposal as well, and then there were some changes, and so we were kind of maybe working off of essentially three documents. It's our understanding that we presented you last night with an electronic document for your tracking records, and we have essentially signed off, if you will, on some of the sections. And we, having presented our offer at the last meeting yesterday, I think it's in your court now for a response, and so we'll open it up to you unless any members of the team have any other comments or questions that you want to forward to us. Okay?
Thank you.
Yes.
We're just trying to work on getting that document sent over.
Great.
Send her over to email. So you guys have the electronic version. I was on duty last night, so I tried to plug through as fast and as much as I can. It should be sent, we'll double check to see if it does pop up. It's a large document, so it should be coming shortly.
We don't have it.
Okay. So there's still the two sections we need to make sure we sign off real quick, and then we'll go through the continual portions of it.
Okay, which sections?
We agreed to section 12, union representation, and we accepted, union dues, section 34. The city accepted our proposals.
Okay, so section 12, union representation, that was an acceptance by us, and then section, I'm sorry, you said?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four, and 34 is union dues, and that's basically who collects and remits and that kind of thing, and so we agreed to accept that as well. So we can, I believe, sign off on this tonight?
Actually...
I don't know if we're going to be signing off individually just yet, why don't we hold off on signatures and then do it as we progress along, we'll see how we're doing in total. We've got that provision in our ground rules for a tentative acceptance, that's where we are, but let's not sign yet. And I also think there's one more that we agreed to last night that we need to add to that list you were just mentioning, which is section 21, where we both agreed to strike the cadre training instructor language. Did we not?
We did. It was just based on a couple of sections, but we agreed to it, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Not the section entirely.
Correct.
Oh.
Exactly, yes.
I'm sorry, and it may be best for us to wait on this, but the other item that we have tentatively agreed upon is the term of the agreement, which is section four, which is a two-year term. And so, again, that's why I think maybe if we have these tentative agreements in place so that should we need to pull it back and go for a one-year, we don't have to open that up. So maybe tentative agreements on those so far.
Yeah, that one's going to be one of the last ones.
Okay.
I mean...
You have anything yet?
I'm trying one more time, real quick. Didn't want to...
Are you sending to our log?
Yeah.
And I'd be willing to bet that if this is a short meeting tonight for council, we might be okay with that, having city council meeting on Monday last night and tonight. And the Wyoming Association of Municipalities, all of our cities, towns, and counties, they're meeting here in Cheyenne tonight too, so we have a lot going on tonight and this week with legislature and everything else, so if we need to have time to review that.
Send them in there now, so...
I'm looking at my junk folder, my handbag.
Do we have the ID number?
Just another email.
Is it standard? It's not .org. It's not .gov.
Yeah, pulling straight from there. Let me hand this back, real quick. That's what we're working on. Is that okay?
Well, we're...
They need that copy.
Yeah, we're going to need...
Can we do a quick caucus then?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ten-minute caucus.
Okay, ten-minute caucus. Thank you.
We're not going into executive session, so they're caucusing, so we don't need a motion. Can we help you out with IT? Like a jump drive or...
We have it on jump drive, that will work the...
You can try a jump drive.
Try this again.
Do you need a jump drive or you need a jump drive?
If you have one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is this yours? That looks like mine.
Okay, double check, make sure it's the city. Check sent, what's it showing on your sent? It's not, it's not sent, so then go back.
It's more of a housekeeping thing. So remember that initial night, we went through each section, signed off the PCOs that we had agreed on. Remember that initial one?
Oh, we did initially.
So, to work, I mean, those sections are closed, like we're no longer negotiating these sections.
Right.
So, I mean, the two for sure that we have closed yesterday can be the same.
Well, how come it's not auto-populated?
Because in years past, that kind of just takes them off the table, and we start narrowing down things.
Take some... You should see if it should auto-populate or you print.
Thank you.
It's not.
It's okay.
Yeah.
That way? There we go.
I have nine city people here, do I need to make copies for your group as well?
If possible, take two.
Okay. Nope.
Jennifer, go pretty good. That's an awful lot of copies, an awful lot of copies. How do you feel about receipt of, well, a few copies, and then we convert to executive session upstairs, they got to leave more up there, so we're waiting on different copies.
We're all going to need copies, so...
And then also, aren't they probably going to go through and explain like the end yesterday before we go into exactly...
And that's what the intention is.
Okay.
Let's keep it the same format as yesterday.
Okay.
All right, so another kind of housekeeping thing. I think last night, we all had the best intentions to not kill trees, but I think we're realizing that just electronically, it's probably not going to work out for us. And so we're all going to need copies, I think, for everything going forward, and we'll provide them as well, too.
And then each night pass the electronic working document back and forth.
Back and forth, and then, you know, again, then we can print it off. Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, okay.
that frankly I haven't had a chance to go through, but it is to be reflective of how we ended things last night. So the offers that were accepted, the language that was tweaked, like on cadre and that sort of thing, are in this document, and I'm prepared to hand it out, I guess, if you'd like to have a copy of where we believe we ended up last night.
Okay, sure, yeah, if there's no new additional language or proposals.
No.
No, this is...
Where we're at status tonight.
Status, right.
Sounds good.
So there's...
And that's what you...
Yep, okay, I don't have one, I don't think. There you go, okay, so these are all yours.
You have a phone for that? Two-factor? We're still waiting on a couple more.
Okay, so now we're on hold, waiting on copies. All right, thanks for everybody's patience.
We talk for the very opening. Just see if the different window... Sure, we're still waiting for a copy, so we're just...
On a legislative note of interest to both of us, and you may know through your representation, but there was a bill coming out of the Senate that would include mental health and workers' compensation for first responders, and that passed out of the Senate today. And so, it's got some good sideboards if they talk about it as far as making sure that, you know, it's not being abused or something like that. I think it might be maybe a little limited scope, so you can't be out forever.
Sure.
But I think it's a really good, it's a good piece of legislation, they've worked really hard on it, and I think for first responders, to have that availability to access workers' compensation for mental health is really important. We support that.
Okay, thank you.
And we did not support having third-party inspectors for fire and electrical safety.
So, that one failed.
That failed. It was a movement to have third-party fire and electrical inspectors, and I testified to the fact that, you know, that could be problematic, where you just kind of hire your own to sign off on different issues, and what was nice is one of the representatives in the committee said, "I'm kind of afraid that this could be abused, where somebody just hires his buddy to sign off on those inspections." And I said, "You kind of hit the nail on the head." And so, we would prefer to have that in our house and not with third parties, so...
We would agree with that.
Yeah.
Nope, I just got it. That's weird, I just said that and it came. You have magic powers. I finally just got it.
Large file. Apologize for that.
So, I guess based on this, we can still go through those explanations that we didn't get from last time, and as soon as you guys get the printing proposals back, we'll go through that. You okay with that?
Yep.
Good. Were you waiting on any other council members?
This is up for tonight.
Okay, yeah, I guess once soon as... Attorney is ready, we'll get back on track.
Well, we just, do we want the copies to go through?
Right.
We don't have the copies yet.
Right, but remember those, there are those sections that you wanted Chief Hoggatt to explain.
You had deferred some questions to Chief Hoggatt yesterday.
Oh.
We want to touch on the questions.
Just so we keep moving.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's a good conversation to have, all right.
Is it okay?
Yep. Do you guys remember which sections they are?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thanks. So what we're going to do, thank you TJ, we're back in, I don't know if we're recording.
Never stopped. We never stopped, because I couldn't hear if we were on an official recess or...
Oh, we're still there, oh, good, okay, well, I hope everybody's enjoying their popcorn, whatever conversation they heard. All right, so what we're going to do now, while we are waiting for copies, Chief Hoggatt is back with us tonight, he was at a conference yesterday, and so what we're going to do is open it up to the sections that the, that the local had questions with that we really couldn't answer because it was more of a management issue with Chief Hoggatt. So if you could lead us through those sections, TJ, and we will have the chief explain the rationale and reasoning.
Absolutely. We got any disagreements with having Chief Hoggatt as a spokesperson, covered by ground rules, mutually agreed on, right?
I, yeah, is that okay?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you, so, well, then we're going to have to have you, well, Chief, then we're going to have to have you up here at the microphone so everybody can hear if that's okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I know. Just a caucus?
I don't believe so. Are you considering it, caucus? Hold on.
I don't.
No, okay, well, hey, Chief, city attorney.
I'm sorry.
Can't do that.
Take my seat.
Okay.
Okay. Chief, welcome back.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of sections that we asked councilor mayor to, little clarification on, that they kind of deferred back to you, so if we could just kind of go through and get a couple of explanations. First one, as we go through, it'd be section three, exclusive bargaining agent. Just look for a little explanation on this one. Mayor briefly discussed, but ultimately deferred back.
And ours was the proposed PCL, correct?
No.
They want the proposed PCL.
We have proposed PCL on this one.
Right. The terminology, command officers being management personnel, battalion chiefs and above are considered management, first-line management, middle management, and then myself, so moving, removing managers from a bargaining agreement.
Okay. We just did some research, and based on acceptance and general acceptance that battalion chiefs are not necessarily management, they're not involved in hiring, firing, promotion, that type of sort of thing, they're more of line personnel, platoon personnel, and just trying to get an explanation on that one, based on, as well as that none of those chief officers were ever notified, consulted, or had discussions to ever be removed from that. I did get you that state statute, it's Wyoming State Statute 2710-101 through 109. And that states that we shall be the sole bargaining agent.
So before the chief gets trapped in something here he doesn't know about, I'm aware of those statutes and don't agree with your reading.
And furthermore, I have questions regarding the duties of the battalion chiefs in that do they set schedules, do they determine who gets the overtime, do they determine work productivity, what is their duty, if you will?
Probably be better explained by Chief Hoggatt, but I'm more than welcome to answer...
No, I would like you to answer that.
Sure.
From your point of view, please.
Their function day-to-day, they manage the lieutenants and the shift. As far as overseeing the overtime, to oversee and follow the rules that is set forth, along with the lieutenants down there.
Okay, so do they supervise the day-to-day with their, yeah, with the battalions or the folks underneath them, lieutenants, as you said, are they supervisory during the day?
They are.
Okay, thank you.
But based on that, still doesn't define as management because of those authority duties, which is widely known and accepted, based on mid-management, we do understand they do supervise and oversee, but they are not involved in hiring, firing, change of work, change of pay, those things are not...
Sure, so one more question regarding management.
Sure.
So lieutenant is under the battalion chief, right?
That's correct.
So if lieutenant doesn't agree with the battalion chief, would he or she be in violation of being subordinate to a supervisor?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Your point of clarification, TJ, is the fact that they are managers, as you stated, they manage, the company officer is a supervisor of a crew, the battalion chiefs manage the shift operations for the day. I think you're confusing the fact of the FLSA exemptions on whether or not they're managers. We've never proposed that they would be non-exempt, they're managers, just not to be covered under, as we've proposed. So there's two different subjects here, where you're going down, where you're talking about the hiring and firing and so forth, which come under the FLSA rules of whether they are exempt or not. We've never proposed them not being exempt.
Right, I guess I'm just using the language based on qualifying in that. Same thing, FLSA, widely accepted and known, understand where you're coming from, but that is what qualifies the management. And again, battalion chiefs also respond to the calls.
Sure, so I think that the chief has responded appropriately with his explanation as far as this section, and I think we can move on.
Yeah, I'll just respond to your question.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. Next section, section eight, grievance procedure. This was one that was discussed and we questioned, and got a little confused look and response by the city.
And this was where when, Chief, where we had had a discussion about our ability to essentially grieve back for instances, and so if you could enlighten just briefly about that.
Well, it's a dual aspect, if we're held to the confines of the contract, then the other side is held under the confines of the contract. There's only one side that's allowed to grieve. In fairness and equity, there would be situations that could arise that the city, through me, could grieve to the union that they are violating the contract. So it's a, it's an equal presentation, back and forth. There's not always times where these situations may be disciplinary in nature, but contractual.
Right, so that's the explanation of that.
Okay, again, disagree like we did before.
Of course, that's okay.
Is that that is one that we can't discipline city employees, can't discipline the fire chief, kind of get lost in the mix of administrative duties, management duties gives you the right to discipline, and based on that, to go back and again, grieve a member, not sure that actually applies to us.
Okay.
But...
Next question.
Section 13, management rights.
This is going to be one, to be very honest with you...
Page 20, management rights.
I don't think that there's any more explanation that needs to come out of this, quite frankly, because we discussed that yesterday, that due to the nature of the outcome of the arbitration hearing, that we believe that management rights really need to be addressed and cleaned up, and so that's our response to that particular section, and I'm happy to take the next one on.
Okay, well, with additional comment, that is one that if it's based on an arbitration, then let's deal with that, why it was arbitrated. If it has to do with the work schedule, let's get that hammered out. But to do the shotgun effect to contract language that's been there, that's been widely agreed upon for years, and we, again, we've talked about this, that we've brought forth, and again, to the contract copy and paste from Casper, it just doesn't apply to our contract.
And this is, again, where we're going to have to agree to disagree, because the largest second municipality in the state of Wyoming that has a 13-page contract with their local, we can every bit cut and paste, and as I said yesterday, would be happy just to cut and paste their 13-page contract in relation to ours, so let's just...
Who's the largest department in the state, then? If Casper's second?
Pardon me?
If you stated Casper's second largest, who's the first largest?
Well, that would be ours.
So are we going to follow second-hand suit?
It's best practices, it's not a matter of, I, let's just move on to the next, please, thank you.
Section 15, please, department staffing. Just look for explanation on why we want to put public service in harm's way by doing dual staffing.
I'm not following what you're calling dual staff.
And furthermore, I'm going to caution right now, your questioning, as far as putting things in harm's way. You can ask, in my opinion, if we're going to go about this in good faith, I suggest that we take any kind of inflammatory or otherwise emotional questioning out of it as far as putting in harm's way. So I would really respect that going forward, that we really stick to just the questioning and not accusations of leaving the public high and dry. Okay, so would you like to restate your question?
Is there a reason why we'd like to do dual staffing?
It's never been defined since I've been here, what exactly the union has considered to be dual staffing. It ties the hands of the department in some deployment efforts and futuristic opportunities. I'm not sure where it's applicable and what you're trying to say, so we would like to be removed.
And based on, it was your proposal?
Yes, that's the proposal, and that's the answer.
We're just questioning why the removal.
That's the answer. Next one?
Okay, next section, section 17, hours of work.
Oh, yes, hours of work. We've had good discussions on this, Chief.
That's absolute. You know, last year, in negotiations, your union team stated how busy you were in the 24 hours, and then in your 24 hours off, and then coming right back, that you didn't have enough time between the shifts, as well as in the most recent arbitration, stating clearly that your 24 hours off when you go home was not enough to recoup and recover. So the interest of safety for your personnel, for the personnel of Cheyenne Fire Rescue, proposing 48 hours...
That's absolute. You know, last year, in negotiations, your union team stated how busy you were in the twenty-four hours, and then in your twenty-four hours off, and then coming right back, that you didn't have enough time between the shifts, as well as in the most recent arbitration, stating clearly that your twenty-four hours off when you go home was not enough to recoup and recover. So the interest of safety for your personnel, for the personnel of Cheyenne Fire Rescue, proposing forty-eight hours between shifts, so you have the adequate rest and capability that you're able to perform your duties when you come back to work.
It is interesting, but there are studies that the four days that are recovering is the true recovery time. So doing two days-
So let's do this. You asked for responses, and I'm not, this is not the back and forth kind of thing. So actually, we're even deviating from what we agreed to last night. So last night, we agreed that we were going to start off with your proposal. Your proposal wasn't ready, and so now we've gone into now answering questions that you had. So you may ask the question, and we will answer it, but there's not going to be a back and forth. All right?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You do understand why the delay in the proposal, right?
I do. And, but for the, this is not the time. You all present, we present, and then we go back into executive sessions, and then we come back out and-
Discuss.
-again, discuss our, our situation. So we are happy to answer the questions that were on the table last night, but we don't want to get into a back and forth tonight on these issues. So we're happy to answer the questions, so that you can take our answers and as a team, have a, have a rebuttal. Does that make sense?
Sure. I just thought we were looking for discussion, but I apologize that that wasn't the case.
All right.
Based on this, you guys have our proposal. We'll go ahead and allow you, if you guys wish, to take an executive session.
All right, so I would need a motion then to, hold on.
You have to go section by section and say, except for to keep the same thing that was yesterday.
Okay, so do I have a motion to adjourn into an executive session?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Shaner, seconded by Mr. White. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, so we are going to adjourn into executive session for thirty minutes, and then we will return.
Back at six o'clock.
Back at six o'clock. Thank you. Or seven o'clock, seven o'clock. Seven o'clock. Almost seven o'clock.